...in which we have to discuss the business of Washington City. And we ask you to bless those who are participating and those who are in governance that we may have a spirit of understanding in all that we do. We are so grateful for those who serve in our community and for the community which we cherish. Help us that we'll continue to be neighborly in what we do and be mindful and considerate of those who live around us. We are grateful for the season in which we celebrate our independence and we are so grateful for those who have given all of their life to our benefit. We ask you to please bless us that we will be kinder, more gentler, and more open to others and the desires which they have to better this community and to improve their quality of life and the life they try to live here in our city. We pray for thy guidance and thy spirit to be with us, that we may do that which is according to thy will. In Jesus' name, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance of this great country. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that very much. We'll move on to item two and now, item one, on approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Ward, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Allison, aye.
Thank you. Item two, announcements. Just a reminder for all of you that on the 4th of July, Washington City will, and the Lions Club, will hold its annual Lions Club 4th of July. It's a great party and we know that our U.C. council will be involved in helping and we invite you out to breakfast and activities, auction, and lunch. And just a great time. So, it's been happening in our city for almost sixty years. It's a great tradition and we're grateful to keep it going. Any other announcements from the council? City manager? All right, move on to item three, Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Anything to declare at this time? Okay, move on to item four, Consent Agenda, to approve the minutes from the city council meetings of 6:11, 2019, and 6:12, 2019, and a final plat, to approve the final plat for Roadrunner Ridge Phase Three, located approximately Bronco Drive, Roadrunner Drive, and Roadrunner Drive, applicant KG Development LLC, Kent State.
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the approval of minutes from our last council meeting of 6:11, 6:12, and the final plant for the Roadrunner Ridge Phase Three.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Torrey, aye.
Allison, aye.
Ranger, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ward, aye.
Thank you, I apologize. That reminds me, I would like to ask you to turn off your cellphone. That was my father, I probably shouldn't have answered it. Item five, Youth Council. Good to see you and your parents. Had a great opportunity to spend a few minutes with you and looks like Carmen, we're gonna have another wonderful year. Carmen, where are you, back there? Okay, let's move on with the oath of office for our new 2019 youth council members. Carmen, come on up.
Okay, I'll announce the ones, the new ones, and have them come up and stand. Okay, first we've got Colin Rand Burr. Colin, you're here. Then we have James Douglas Holt. Then we have Brooklyn Jackson. And then we have Rain Nicole Kenworthy. And then we have Isabel Marsden. And then we have Kylie Messenger. And then we have Chloe Nielsen. Are they coming up?
They're standing up.
Come on up, they're just standing up.
They're coming up here.
Come on up, you guys.
I didn't feel any wind beneath my wings, Peter. Then we have Scott Raymond Palmer. And then we have, I gotta make sure I've got everybody, Benjamins Jacob Park. I'm from Washington, that's P-A-R-K.
That's right.
Okay. And then we have, I gotta make sure, Savannah Smiles Richardson. And then we have Spencer Brandon Welch. And then we have Emma Sky Whitney. Now, I don't believe I missed any of you, did I? Did I, is anybody standing up saying I missed them? Okay. These are our new, the new ones coming on board and we are really excited. We just did a meet and greet with the parents so that they understood what the year was going to be and what their responsibility was as parents to these beautiful youth. So, I think it went very well.
Mayor, while they're doing that, if I, if you'll yield me just a second to-
The mayor came and spoke and we really appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Absolutely.
-tell Carmen and those who help her how grateful we are as a council for all that
Absolutely.
And so, I think this works out. And I'm gonna turn the time over to Denise to swear them in.
you do with these youth. Last year, we thought we were graduating them all and look what you retooled with.
And then we wanna take a picture of them, okay?
Okay.
And then if we could excuse them afterwards.
So, so it's, it's, she just makes great young people of these young people as they come
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for giving us the honor to be a part of this community and serve and, and
in and it's fun to watch them as they go futures and some of them get married and take
they are gonna give a lot of service, aren't ya? Yeah, okay, thank you.
a, take on careers that they pick up in youth council at the legislature or other places that suddenly said they wanna become attorneys or lobbyists or who knows what they decide to become because they were involved with youth councils. Anyway, thank you Carmen and thank you youth that choose to become a part of that. We appreciate all you do for us as a community.
We are proud of our youth council.
Absolutely, thank you.
Absolutely.
We did, yeah, it was fun. Yeah, we, in fact, it's been kinda fun watching this because when we first started Bountiful, city was the youth council of the state that everybody wanted to, to look up to and to bill like. And guess who it is now? Washington City. So, we are the epitome of the state of Utah. Every youth council out there wants to be like you. They wanna come see what you do. They always are calling Carmen, "How do you make this happen? How do you do that? What do you do here?" And so, you are the pride of the state of Utah and youth councils. Thanks again, Carmen.
Now, we want you to come up so we can get a picture. Carmen, don't you want a picture? Don't you want a picture? Oh, yeah, oh, never mind. You're good.
It's 'cause it's so much fun. And I, you know, to the youth of this current class, you know, you've probably heard that Carmen does a great job and it's, and it's a good council and all that, but I think when you get into it and get doing some of the activities and certainly the Capitol trip, you guys are really gonna enjoy spending time and putting forth the time and effort into it. So, thank you for volunteering and stepping up.
You're welcome and you're excused. How many were there, twelve?
Hey Nick, you can tell your son when he's done popping your back, he can come pop mine. Thanks.
Thanks, Nick. All right, we'll move on to item six, Plat Amendment. Consideration to approve an amendment to the Amerswell Estates preliminary plat by adding fourteen lots located approximately 500 West, 3090 South, applicant Walter Plumb.
Yeah, it's, it's not Walt Plumb. It's Mike Stanley. I got one that-
Sorry, Mike, come on up, Mike Stanley. I have out Walter Plumb.
Yeah.
Can I say that didn't look like it?
You didn't know you'd sold out, did you? I hope you got a good check.
All right, sorry Mayor, I'm trying to get over to... There we go. Just gonna kinda zoom in on the part that's being amended right here. The applicant estate has requested approval of an amended preliminary plat for Amerswell Estates. Now, the reason for the amended request is to, as stated earlier by the mayor, to add fourteen lots to the originally approved preliminary plat. The original plat was approved back on July 11th of 2018. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended preliminary plat and finds it conforms to the zoning of this particular area. Subdivision also remains in compliance with subdivision ordinance of the city. The planning commission reviewed the request at their May 15th, 2019 meeting. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the amended preliminary plat for Amerswell Estates subdivision. Onto you, the city council, with the original findings and conditions and then adding a number fifteen condition, and I'll jump to that one. I don't know why, actually, it wasn't a fifteenth. Well, is-
No, there's another. Was another page, right?
Yeah, there should be, that's, I may have had the fifteenth wrong, it may have just been, is there fifteen on yours?
Because-
I've got fourteen. Okay, and I think that's what it is. I, I didn't count when I went, so it was, oh, that's because we took one out that was already taken care of. So, it is the fourteenth. But I'll just make reference, there's normally eleven, but the last three are kind of additions. Number twelve is before the thirty-second lot of the subdivision is recorded and agreement will need to be provided with the adjoining property owner to the north or the east and a sufficient roadway provided and approved by the public works department. This is to meet the requirement of a secondary access for the development. An alternative, alternative to this condition would include the bound, the building of a roadway which borders on the west on the St. George city limit boundary that would head to the north, that would also be an accepted, whichever comes first, I guess, is, will take. Number thirteen, due to lack of minimum street width being presented on the preliminary plat, and that's, I'll, I'll zoom in on that particular area so you know what we're talking about. It's this little narrow area that you see, due to that, we didn't want them to go back and try to get all taken care of. We said before, a final plat comes that would, would involve that lot fifty-seven, if, you know, fifty-eight and lot one over there, that they would have to require, would be required to bring in sufficient easement or dedication to the city that would allow them that ingress egress or the dedicated road, but that's on the St. George city side of that line. This is what happens when you have two cities that butt up against each other, sometimes you have to work those things. So, they would have to get that from whoever that property owner is or if the city dedicates it, then we're fine because then it is a, a public road even though it's not ours, but it's still public to be used. And so, we'll just take, we just wanted to make sure that's a condition on this preliminary plat, is that does not meet the minimum right there, so just wanted to point that out. And number fourteen, due to the final, due at final plat application, sufficient easements for utilities being serviced from Merrill Road, where we know they're gonna have to bring in water and sewer and everything from that direction. There is a property owner between Merrill Road and this development. Again, it could either come down that St. George city street if, that's probably not a possibility because it's over in St. George city side, but doesn't mean that it can't happen, but more than likely it'll come across the property owner from the north, down through his property, that will need to have those in there and an easement will have to be recorded in place.
Drew?
Yes.
What's the zoning again?
The zoning is our, it's different, I'm, I'll bring that up for you here. This piece is being added because it was the piece down by the school that wasn't, you know, that they didn't know what they were gonna do yet, so now they know-
So, they haven't reconfigured so much as added additional property and-
It's R110 on the lots, these new ones being added, which are lots number, oh, fifty, fifty-one, all the way around to sixty-three. That has the R110 zoning to it and then everything north of that is R112.
I called it an R112 and I saw a lot that's under the R1, the twelve, so that was-
Yeah, and so, this is the area in, in yellow that's being added because again, originally they were just doing the R112. I can't remember, well, I do remember because it was an annexation thing at the time when we were doing all that. And so, it was coming through and getting finalized and the county kinda messed Denise up for a while. This was one of those that got held up and had to come back to you guys and restarted on a time limit again. So, now that's all been taken care of and it's annexed into the city. This piece is now able to, so that's why they thought, well, while we're here and because of the road situation, St. George keeps changing their mind up there, they can at least get some lots started and get some money back on, on the development side of it. And so, that'll be your phase one coming in even though it's, and you can kinda see where that, if I can go back, does that help you guys there? I'll go back now. To the plat and, and so, that dashed line that you see from fifty through fifty-three, then sixty to sixty-three, that'll basically be the first phase, they'll come in with the final plat and get that started so they can start generating some stuff back. And then that's the other problem, they didn't have a lot of access. This one, they have access right off of thirty ninety. And so, that's kinda why the amendment's here before you and what will be happening here in the short future when they get there. I think they already have construction drawings turned in, don't you? Or not? They're ready, okay? So, that, that'll be going forward soon. Any other questions I can answer for you?
Okay, I'm good. It seemed like a lot of technicalities on this particular development.
Well, when you butt up against another city and there's sometimes roads involved, it's great when backyards are what, you know, is in between those city limit lines, but when you, this is why a lot, like, a lot of cities don't like to split streets that way, even if it goes right down the middle of the street, someone owns half of that and the other city owns the other half and, you know, so you could see somebody maintaining the one side, you know, maybe doing slurry seal on the other one, doesn't care about the other half of the road and then it, it really looks bad. Yeah.
On the south side where it butts up to thirty-six fifty, is that thirty-six fifty?
It's thirty ninety.
On the south end?
Thirty ninety south.
It should be thirty ninety. You can, yeah, there you go, thirty, thirty ninety. But, okay, your question-
Well, those two lots, do we have additional setback on that road or not?
No, they'll just, they'll have to maintain the twenty foot off of the, from the property line back. Let me see, let's see-
Is that school, school to the east, right?
Yes, that's the new intermediate school.
And then the church's setback, I just didn't know if we had additional setbacks on that.
Well, it looks like that's a sixty-six foot collector. We wouldn't allow any curb cuts on it by any means, but they just have to maintain the regular setback on that, which would be a street setback of twenty feet.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments for Drew or for the applicant?
I'll add a comment.
Okay.
That's simply, I don't like the private streets. Anytime we get into these small skinny private streets, suddenly people start parking on the roads. Think, Kevin, this probably isn't a through street?
This is not a-
So, the subdivision will be self-contained for the most part?
Yeah, this is a public street.
Well, all the streets going up and the cul-de-sacs are all privatized.
Oh, the cul-de-sacs, okay, yeah.
So, I just, anytime we get those narrow streets, it just, it's always a future problem waiting to happen and whatnot, so just like I say, it is what it is. I just like them.
And we've talked about that quite a bit, that it tends to just to be problems for us. I'm assuming there's room for the fire trucks to come in there and turn around, but-
It's thirty-four foot public, private street. I didn't see that, I saw the other one that said public, so I didn't notice that, but what is it if we go to, is it just, it'll make all these lots too small, right?
Correct.
It won't if we go to public streets? Can you come up then?
Randy Walker, a civil science representing applicant. So, Stanley's vision on this is a little bit different than just a standard subdivision. This, the preliminary plat, if you notice, there's some street sections shown on it that kinda present what they're trying to do. What they're wanting to do is create tree-lined streets, narrower corridors, and sticking with that, it, it's a thirty-foot asphalt section, the standard road has thirty-five, so it's really a reduction of five feet of asphalt. That's all. What they're trying to do is put a landscape buffer in there with tree-lined streets to, there's one similar, in fact, I think, I think one of the owners actually lives in it up in Sycamore, it's right on the south side of Daybreak, where they've done tree-lined streets with planter strips. So, they're wanting to create a walkable neighborhood where they're dead-end roads, no through traffic. These are twelve thousand plus square foot lots, so each of them will have three-car garages, wide driveways, so really parking on the street should be a non-issue. Where we do a townhome project and cram them all in there with these dinky little streets, so this is kind of an anomaly with the-
Well, the concern isn't so much that, with, I like the tree-lined streets, don't get me wrong, it's the, it's the maintenance issue down the road for the residents, they get all wound up, the city's not maintaining their streets and they gotta hire somebody to maintain their streets-
They have to pay for it.
And they wanna try and bring them in and it's not part of our, not part of our ordinance and-
Especially depending, usually on these bigger lots and bigger homes, HOAs don't function as well, can really speak to you. And so, all of a sudden, how do you get those streets maintained if you don't have a strong HOA that's gonna do that for you?
These, I think, I can't remember the lot total since we changed it up, how many lots are we? Sixty-two?
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, so we, we'll have an HOA because we have a detention basin to maintain and depending on how they wanna handle the lots, that will eventually be adjacent to the church, thirty-two ten, five fifteen west, Washington's address. And so, there, there will be a functioning HOA. I understand the, the scariness of-
Well, it gets a little bit more difficult because they're not all private, so some of the individuals in the HOA are gonna be paying for their neighbors' asphalt and roads. They, they do notice that.
Yeah.
Trio, Trio's a big one that's like that, half of it's private and half of it's not. I hear from them quite often, the ones that are on the public streets have wound up, they're paying for the neighbors' private.
Yeah.
Which seems like a silly position for us to take, to try and get us to have the street and maintain it, but for the residents, it really does make a difference when they go to cut that check and wondering why they've gotta pay it, but-
Mike, Stanley's here, he can address that if he wants a little bit with his HOA. I'm not certain if he's assessing lots differently in the development. We did one back in the day that was similar to this, Hubble Creek, because it's the same scenario where they have public and private mixes. So, I mean, he can, I don't know, Mike wants to sit up and talk, but he can structure HOA if that, if that's a recommendation, maybe look at assessing lots a little bit differently versus just for landscaping.
Can you give me the example of how you would do that, to assess the lots differently that would make a difference?
I live in Skyview, which is across the street, so we all have to pay for our private streets and we have a lot of the neighborhood who's upset about it, wanna gift it to the city and the city, we're not a public standard because we have a rural section, well, technically we're gated, so we can't bring it to a public standard, so a lot of the neighbors, they're upset, a lot of the neighbors love it, so you can't please everyone.
I think the court's asking difference between assessing guys on private street versus ones on public street.
I think if you had a street frontage on, I mean, this is something that Stanley's can look into, but-
Just to get to that one point, not necessarily-
Having a frontage on a public street versus a private street, I mean, maybe you pay a premium to live in the cul-de-sacs to the HOA.
Have to pay a premium to cul-de-sac kids? Sorry.
One of the things we've been talking about a bit lately is on the retention ponds, are they large enough to put some mini park kinds of things, at least a field to take and kick a soccer ball or some picnic tables or whatever in those detention areas. Barry, Barry would like to talk to you about that, I think.
It's only, yeah, about thirteen thousand square feet, so-
Yeah.
It'd have to be more of an HOA, there again, an HOA neighborhood.
Grass rather than rock?
Mike, I've got one question from our public works. On a situation with these private streets, sidewalk maintenance in there, do the, do the residents also make, especially where they're tree-lined, and we all know what happens with trees and sidewalks?
Yeah, everything on the private street is the HOA's responsibility.
Okay, so they would be responsible when those start to lift and do their thing with the trees?
Now, if you go to the next cross-section group, I just spotted this and I'm not sure what conversations it's got on, but this shows the sidewalk outside the public private. So, that would fall on the homeowners to maintain those sidewalks.
Even on the public street?
Because it's not on, it's not in my-
Not on the city right-of-way?
Yeah.
And a lot of flats would have to have these-
Still on.
Sometimes too, that, I would like that even spelled out, because common area, most people go to thinking in the open space, common area, you're not thinking, I'm gonna have to maintain the roads, I'm gonna have to maintain the sidewalks. They don't look at those as common areas, even though-
They don't put it under a private street?
Exactly, exactly. So, we oughta probably add a note somewhere to there that said, you know, private streets and sidewalks will be maintained by the same group.
When we have the subdivision as all private streets, we have a very specific notice to say all streets are private and not maintained. We come right out and say that and we don't have a mix of, and we used to see that on the final plat, this is again a preliminary plat, so that most preliminary plats will move on. But we really-
One thing about putting on when you start, because they're there when you end, where if you say, well, wait, put them on at the end?
Well, and we're, we're moving pretty quickly through those final plats too, so if it's not on there, we-
Mike, what's the narrowest road profile that we've got for public streets? Is it, is it the fifty-foot, thirty-five-foot asphalt?
It's a fifty-foot. We do have a provision in there and it's been, we're cleaning the language up on it, but it was specifically put in for single-loaded roads that it could go down to a thirty-six, I wanna say, thirty-six foot. So, there's only houses on one side, there'd only be sidewalk on one side.
Because we're seeing more and more of these thirty-foot asphalt profiles with, so they can get sidewalks and tree-lined streets in.
Yeah, our, our standards actually say for fifty, for a public road with the tree-lined streets, you have to add width to the right of it. So, you'd have to basically go to a fifty-eight foot for a four-foot landscape strip. This also with this cross-section, that actually their property line is the front edge of that sidewalk, so it puts the house looking like it's gonna be close to the street if they go with the minimum setbacks, because that four foot is included in the setback of the sidewalk.
Sometimes, too, that, I would like that even spelled out, because common area, most people go to thinking in the open space. Common area, you're not thinking, I'm gonna have to maintain the roads, I'm gonna have to maintain the sidewalks. They don't look at those as common areas, even though...
They don't put it under a private street.
Exactly, exactly. So we oughta probably add a note somewhere to there that said, you know, private streets and sidewalks will be maintained by the same group.
Pete, when we have the subdivision as all private streets, he has very specific notes to say all streets are private and not maintained. We come right out and say that, and we don't have a mix of...
And we used to see that on the final plat. This is again a preliminary plat, so that most preliminary plats will move on.
One thing about putting them on when you start, because they're there when you end, where if you say, well, wait, put them on at the end?
Well, and we're moving pretty quickly through those final plats, too, so if it's not on there, we...
Mike, what's the narrowest road profile that we've got for public streets? Is it, is it the fifty-foot, thirty-five-feet asphalt?
It's a fifty-foot. We do have a provision in there, and it's been, we're cleaning the language up on it, but it was specifically put in for, um, single-loaded roads that it could go down to a thirty-six, I wanna say, thirty-six foot. So there's only houses on one side, there'd only be sidewalk on one side.
Because we're seeing more and more of these thirty-foot asphalt profiles with, so they can get sidewalks and tree-lined streets in.
Yeah, our, our standards actually say for fifty-four, a public road with the tree-lined streets, you have to add width to the right of it. So you'd have to basically go to a fifty-eight foot for a four-foot landscape strip. This also with this cross-section, that actually their property line is the front edge of that sidewalk, so it puts the house looking like it's gonna be close to the street if they go with the minimum setbacks, because that four-foot is included in the setback of the sidewalk.
Which wouldn't be the case of a republic.
Well, on the standard one, where we don't, where the, oh, the sidewalk falls into the right-of-way. Which would be the front edge of the sidewalk, but at the back like normal.
So I have to let all the concrete guys know the pull-up, pull-in measurements, correct?
Yeah, because we have a few subdivisions, we ran into some problems.
Treasure Valley.
We looked, it was like four hundred million years on the project, and we weren't able to, you know, we called this, that's what happened, was on the sidewalk, put three gates on it. But the sidewalk is a private property.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. I just say, I can...
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Make a motion that we approve an amendment to the Amherstville State's preliminary plat by adding fourteen lots located approximately five hundred west, thirty-ninety south, um, with the additional request that the, um, common area, detention area, be landscaped such that it's usable space.
What about adding a note on your...
Private streets.
Private street, no.
I'm, I'm happy to amend it if you want to spell out what you...
Oh, just, yeah, I just added a note on the plat stating...
With the addition of, add a fifth note on the plat stating that the private streets and sidewalks are gonna be the responsibility of the HOA for the maintenance and care?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Ward, I.
Cluff, I.
Granger, I.
Ellis, I.
Turekai.
All right, that's approved. Item seven, public hearings. Public hearing for the consideration to approve the vacation slash abandonment for a portion of Hundred South, approximately eleven-point-two-five feet, located between Main Street and one hundred east on the south side of the road. Applicant Rex Poppa, Carol Clove, and Vernon Hepworth.
Okay, this is a road vacation for eleven-point-two-five feet, I believe it is, on the south, yeah, eleven-point-two-five feet on the south side of one hundred south between Main Street and one hundred east. It's just the small section, there you go, thank you very much, Drew. It's just that small section right there. It's not uncommon for the city to have gone back and vacated our huge roads down to sides because they're not being used at this time. We did receive a letter from Rex Poppa this afternoon. I dropped it in your packet after you got here, explaining that he couldn't be here tonight. But it's just three property owners that this is affecting, and they've all agreed to go through with this. I have not received any complaints via emails or notifications. I don't know if there's anyone here tonight that have any objections to it, but...
What's the purpose for it? It's not being used, and so I'm just curious.
Part of it is, was initiated to begin with, with this flag lot that they're creating. It, it gives them a little extra room so that they can meet their square footage. And there's a trade going on, um, that'll eventually happen when the, when the plat's actually recorded.
So is that flag lot already, that flag lot's already in?
It's in the process of going in. It's not recorded. They're waiting for this to happen first before they finish it. But that's how it'll, that's how it's going to look.
That's, that's the purpose for going on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so then what does that limit the right-of-way for the city on that street? What's the maximum? Would it just be thirty?
Oh, no.
That's, that's half-road, so it's a, it's thirty-foot from the half-road. So quite a few years back, probably. Oh, wow, twenty, twenty years back, the council, we were, we would get a lot of these, and it was just a hodgepodge that had happened in the past. The council set the standard that with these older roads in the older part of town, this is an eighty-two-and-a-half-foot right-of-way. We're not gonna build those roads that big. So instead of going to a normal fifty in a normal residential neighborhood, the council at that time determined that they still wanted the fill of the wider roads in the old part of town, so we would set sixty-foot width for a road right-of-way in the older part of town. So that's why we had to abandon back to this.
If this, this maintains that it is sixty-foot, you're just giving back the, the old right-of-way that was...
The eleven-and-a-half-foot that we wouldn't normally, because we right now have eighty-two-and-a-half-foot right-of-way. So on this side of the road, we have forty-one-and-a-quarter. So we're giving back eleven feet, and we'll maintain that sixty-foot right-of-way.
On that flag access, isn't it twenty-foot minimum?
Okay. Is there, is there more streets on there that, around this than just these three owners that we should be addressing?
This is looking on the south side of that street.
Yeah.
As people want to come in and pay for the, the notifications, the advertising.
Do all that. So is it, is it just this street, or is there other streets?
Our, our street was done twenty years ago. They gave us thirteen feet. Mike didn't want to maintain that thirteen feet, so he makes me do it.
Well, the one thought is, is oftentimes when we vacate our new streets, we split it fifty-fifty, so hopefully with this one, everybody on the south side's benefiting, the north side gets nothing out of this.
Well, they, they can vacate theirs.
But if we're maintaining sixty-foot...
They've got eleven-and-a-half.
They've got eleven-and-a-half still, so really you've got more than the, than the eighty. Okay.
This is just center line, right? Okay.
Yeah, your line there is center line, so... So when we vacate, we vacate back to the joining problem.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that they have the same opportunity on the other side of the street, but it... More questions for me?
Mayor, if there's no more.
Wait a minute, this, this is a public hearing, yeah.
That's why I just buttoned, bit my time, right?
If you out there that may have a interest in this, come on up and share your wisdom with us. I'm gonna give you ten more seconds. All right. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Turekai.
Granger, I.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you. Item B, public hearing for the consideration to adopt a resolution to internally finance the fleet replacement model for fiscal year 2020. The principal amount not to exceed two-hundred-ninety-eight thousand dollars will be loaned from the water fund to the fleet fund for a term of five years. Interest rate will be a fixed rate of three percent compounded semi-annually. Kimberly Roush.
So mayor, this covers the, um, the vehicles that are included in the proposed 2020 budget for us to fulfill the replacement of six of our vehicles that qualified in the fleet replacement model, as well as the acquisition of three additional vehicles that are associated with new hires that were presented. So, um, the, again, the loan amount equates to the maximum amount that it would be. Obviously, we go in based off of estimates and bids. The actual amount that will be issued will be based off of actual acquisition prices once we have those. So if it comes in less than that, then the loan amount would be reduced to the actual amount of those purchases that are associated with this. And as we've talked about previously, whenever possible, we do look at doing internal loans versus issuing lease purchase debt outside when we have other departments that have idle funds that could generate interest earnings off of that.
Is this amount the same as when we started this program?
The amount varies each year because you base it off of, it's the same vehicles that are included in the rollout program, but as years go on, the cost of acquiring vehicles changes. So each year we go and we do an update based on what the estimate of those is, as well as the estimated cost of the resale of the other vehicles going out. So the dollar amounts fluctuate, um, depending on the market.
And do you know what that fluctuation is this year?
No, I, I don't know compared to the original when we sent it in, but it does contain the, uh, original, um, desire to replace six vehicles a year, which would get our fleet at the current time replaced every ten years.
Plus three?
Yes, the three additions for the new hires that are proposed in the budget that are in need.
Any other questions for Kimberly? Again, this is a public hearing. Any of you out there interested in this portion of the public hearing, feel free to come on up. Ten more seconds. Okay, I'll make it five more seconds. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So made.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Turekai.
Ellis, I.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you. Item C, public hearing for consideration to approve a resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget for the funds of Washington City. Kimberly, again.
So mayor and council, with this year-end budget opening, these totals are the same amount as the year-end estimate, so back on May eighth, this information became available to the council and the public as we started the tentative budget and review process. So we haven't made any changes to the year-end dollar amount since that was issued back in, in May. We are looking at reducing the overall city budget from fifty-nine million down to fifty-seven. Now, the, the bulk of the reduction is related to capital improvement projects, as we know at times, trying to fit everything and have it hit an actual fiscal calendar schedule doesn't quite work. So, um, again, the bulk of it is related to a reduction in capital outlay that will continue forward in the next year and is also included in the 2020 budget proposal.
So which increases that budget? Well, it increases.
Right, but it, it was also part of what was planned in the tentative, and so we, we do not have any anticipated changes with that either, so...
I personally greatly appreciate the time you've taken to educate us on those individual costs as we go. It's a very unique thing, the budget. It's a great read if you really have some spare time.
Some of it's true.
Eh, you know. It, it has been fun to go through the particulars leading up into this meeting, and I appreciate the attention that's been given to us as a council. Thank you so much for educating us on this and making us more confident. Yeah, millions of dollars are a kind of unique thing to manage, and I really appreciate our staff for being very clear in the needs within our city and helping us better articulate and fund those needs.
Thank you, councilman. Again, a public hearing. Any of you out there that would like to throw a dart? Not all entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion, excuse me, a motion and a second, thank you.
Ward, I.
Cluff, I.
Granger, I.
Ellis, I. Turekai.
Thank you, that is considered, considered, considered. Item eight, consideration to approve an ordinance to approve the vacation slash abandonment for a portion of Hundred South, approximately eleven-point-two-five feet, located between Main and one hundred east, south, south side of the road.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, to approve the vacation abandonment for a portion of one hundred south, approximately eleven-point-two-five feet, located between Main Street and one hundred east on the south side of the road.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Turekai.
Ellis, I.
Granger, I.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you, that is approved. Resolution nine A, consideration to approve a resolution to adopt the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget for Washington City. Any additional comments or questions?
Just a question, sir. So I was just trying to dig up the documentation from the last time we spoke about this, but when you're saying that the, that it was reduced from a fifty-nine to fifty-seven, was that on our last documents?
This one that you're on right now is for the new 2020 budget.
Okay.
But I can answer that question now if you want me to. So in the, the documentation that you went out for the tentative budget proposal, it includes the current, uh, the prior actual, which would be fiscal year 2018 actual, the 2019 year-end estimate, and then the 2020 proposed. So you would not have seen necessarily a column that would have shown that. However, in your packets that went out this week specifically related to this resolution, you should have received paperwork that showed the comparison of the current budget to the proposed amended budget that would reflect that differentiation. If you have specific questions about it, I do have information I can also share.
Thank you, Kimberly. Entertained a motion?
Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution to adopt our 2019-2020 year fiscal budget for Washington City. Thank all those that have been involved in putting that together for us.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second?
Turekai.
Ellis, I.
Granger, I.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you. It's approved. Item B, consideration to approve a resolution authorizing a loan from the sewer fund to the fleet fund in accordance with the fleet replacement model.
Now, was this the same, because the previous one, we talked about the water department and the sewer department. Is this the same one we're playing with?
So each, yes, so each year, we, um, we look at what enterprise funds or what different departments have resources that are available for investment.
Okay.
And so, yes, the last two that we did, we did do those through the water fund. This one is being issued through the sewer fund.
But our public hearing tonight was water fund.
Or did they have it flipped?
Yeah, our public hearing was water fund. That's why I was asking the question.
Then that's probably a...
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it sewer fund that we really are? It's not the water fund?
Absolutely. We will go back to public hearings. Item B, public hearing for the consideration to adopt a resolution to internally finance the fleet replacement model for fiscal year 2020. Principal amount not to exceed two-hundred-ninety-eight thousand will be loaned from the sewer fund to the fleet fund for a term of five years. Interest rate will be a fixed rate of three percent compounded semi-annually.
I appreciate the reassurance that this is not money that's needed, it's money that's invested. Okay?
Again, it's a public hearing. Mark, you don't have anything to say on there?
Mayor, I'm gonna go out on a limb that nobody...
Okay.
I, I was expecting a stampede with that change.
I'll, I'll make a motion to close a public hearing. How's that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to put you on this one.
Turekai.
Ellis, I.
Granger, I.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Thank you for picking that up. Okay, then we'll move back to item B and the resolution. Consideration to approve a resolution authorizing a loan from the sewer fund to the fleet fund in accordance with the fleet replacement model.
I move approval of that loan from the sewer fund to the fleet fund in accordance with our fleet replacement model.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Ward, I.
Cluff, I.
Granger, I.
Ellis, I.
Turekai.
Thank you, and thank you again for picking that up. Item C, consideration to approve a resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2018-2019 Item C, consideration to approve a resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget for the funds of Washington City.
Good, having discussed this a lot. I move approval of the resolution to open and amend the Washington City 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Just to, just to comment before we vote and tell our, our great employees of our city, thank you. Obviously, when you can reduce your budget by $2 million, that shows you how frugal they've worked. And some of that, obviously, is capital approval projects, but it's also departments and department heads that have been great, make great use of their funds. So thank you.
In addition with those notes, continuing to see how there's many more areas where all of our department leaders are looking to save more money and make us more financially sustainable as a city, I give my sincere respect and appreciation for continuing to look in those avenues.
Thank you.
Turick eye.
Bellis night.
Ranger eye.
Clough eye.
Ward eye.
Thank you very much. Item D, consideration to approve a resolution setting the property levy tax for Washington City fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019. Carrie will write.
I am bringing the 2019 property tax, certified property tax rate to you that has been proposed by Washington County. You should have copies of that in your packet. What the proposed tax rate is this year for property tax is .001149 for Washington City. That is down from what it was a year ago of .001256. That, of course, is because of the increased value of property within Washington City. Because the property tax is set to give us a flow of revenue that is somewhat constant throughout each of the years. They go back and use a three-year history to do that. With that new mill levy, that actually will increase the amount of revenue that we receive on the property taxes by $274,985 for the 2019 year.
The basis of that is our growth, not any increase in tax.
Not an increase in taxes. The basis of that, of course, comes down to the value of the taxes, the build-out of as far as new construction that we've had, as well as the assessed valuation by the county. Any questions?
Say the last part again, as well as the, what assessed by the county? The very last sentence you just said.
The county goes out and appraises the properties. And that's where they assess the value of the property. And being a first home, and it's 55% of what the appraised value of property is, is what is charged as far as the property tax. Second homes are charged at 100%.
In this real estate world that we live in, private home becomes worth more every pay more every year.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions additional for Carrie? Not all entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution setting the property tax levy for Washington City fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 in the tax rate of .001149. Correct?
That's correct.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Well, I was just thinking on this, just, I mean, the county actually sets that tax.
That's correct.
What would we, if we voted no on it, what would that even do?
Not a lot, because at this point in time, it's been ratified by the county, it's also been ratified by the state. What it is is more or less a ratification by the city because...
Right, which is an acceptance of the value that we're getting there.
In order to make a change as far as that went, we would have to file for a truth and taxation hearing for the public, which we're past that deadline for doing.
Large process, large process to say no, easy process to say yes. Ward eye.
Clough eye.
Ranger eye, there are a lot of eyes going on tonight, but this is a lot of work that's been done.
This part makes it look easy, yeah.
Bellis night.
Turick eye.
All right, thank you.
It's kind of funny you brought that up, because I also brought that up.
Yeah? So what if I say no?
We come in and do this every year, and it's usually after the fact that it's been certified by the county and by the state, so. The next item is also mine. Did you want to read it?
Yeah, I knew. Consideration to approve a resolution setting the property tax levy for Washington City's Special Service District in Coral Canyon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019.
That one is set at a .002020 as the proposed rate for that. That is also down from last year, which is a .002525. We use that rate to pay off the debt service that we have in the Coral Canyon Service, Special Services District. And so the state kind of limits us as far as what we can do with that particular rate, because they don't want us over-collecting on those people out there, which is certainly a frugal thing to do, a prudent thing to do. So that's why the rate is down a little bit this year from what it was a year ago. That will provide us with $768,554 in revenue off of that special service district, which will cover the debt service that we have on that particular bond for this next coming year.
Probably worth mentioning that we've reduced that debt with some reinvestment.
We have.
Yeah, so a couple of things have happened.
You might want to mention that.
Thank you, Councilman, because I think that is important. We do share this with Coral Canyon HOA with them. We used to have this required to be set under the bond covenants of .003. And over the last two years, and that's been set for many, many years with them, and over the last two years, through both the summary investment, but also appreciation and continued development out there, that has now decreased, and we anticipate that will, it'll level off at some point, but still could, some decrease based upon build-out. So it's good.
So is that just to the saturation? I don't know if it's a proper term for this, but when this first was put in as a special district, there were so few homes, but now it is a very large community compared to what it first started.
Yeah, and that's why, that you could, we could only pull bonds at certain periods during development out there. There were three kind of tranches of bonds, and now, of course, we're at the maximum amount, which means we may pay the maximum amount of debt service on those. And so that's why they fixed it, to make sure that they were covering our debt service. But now that, we still got some build-out to do there, but the fact of the matter is it's built out enough that we can start to lower their property tax accordingly.
Did we also, at the same time, reduce the amount of time that they were going to?
When we did the refinance on the bond, yeah.
It seemed like we did, as we cut some years off.
Cut some years off and lowered the...
Yeah, so I just, I wanted to make the point that we're really cognizant of what's going on out there, even though that's a different district.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's good.
Can you, can you remind us how much time is actually left on that? This is something I get asked every once in a while.
No, because I don't know where it's standing right here. I'd have to research that.
2029? 28?
2028?
So, yeah, which is substantial, because the total amount was ultimately pulled down in that area is 9 million. Basically, 3, 3, and 3. But it's built, it's absolutely built, beautiful community. They feel that way, so.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other questions or comments?
There's no further discussion, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution setting the property tax levy for Washington City's Special Service District in Coral Canyons for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019.
Second.
At, who, I throw some numbers at me.
002020.
What was it?
Is it .002020? At .002020.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Clough eye.
Ranger eye.
Bellis night.
Turick eye.
Thank you. Item F, consideration to approve a resolution replacing Resolution R 207-19 by amending the culinary and raw water rates.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, we get an increase on our wholesale water rates that we purchase from the district, increased by 10 cents per thousand. Last year, I missed that rate increase, so we're gonna have to do a double this year. So basically, that's what we're doing, is raising the rate of our water rate on the Washington Conservancy District side from 46 cents to 66 cents. That is also included in the, in the resolution, that it also increases our rates on our hydrant meter usage. That district rate is 70 cents a thousand on our hydrant meters. And then the other change in there is on our raw water. We also have the rate increase on our raw water, but we also have set our base rate on the raw water, and that base rate on the raw water is $905. And this is one customer, and it's the Coral Canyon Golf Course that we send irrigation water to. So their, their total cost of water is a $905 base and a 78 cents per thousand gallons.
So what's, how much is it changing then? Say it again.
So there's, there's a 70 cents per thousand on the water rate for the district, which that actually was never included in their charges. But we, we had not been charged that until this year on our raw water.
So on the raw water, what was it before the 70 cents?
It was zero, because we weren't charged that, that district rate until this year.
So is it accurate to say on this resolution of these rates that it's all due to the increases in the water conservancy?
Other than the base rate on the irrigation.
On the irrigation?
Yes.
So is that in your chart here on item, like, it's just in 9F there? Is that the 18.7 dollars? It's the monthly base rate?
That is on the residential.
Because you...
The residential base rate, it's the same. It hasn't changed.
Okay, yeah.
And the city's cost per thousand has not changed. It's just the, the water districts' charges changed. On the residential, the non-residential, the hydrant meter, and then the raw water or irrigation water for the Coral Canyon Golf Course, the base rate was added again. We had a base rate, but it went off because we were doing a study, and it never got put back on, so now this is...
So I must be, I must be missing your terms, though. You're saying that the base, the residential doesn't change, but, but it does.
The residential base rate does not change.
Right.
The residential, the city charges, that is our cost of water, is not changing. It's just adding 20 cents to the Conservancy District charges, which they charge us, so...
Which does affect the residential, yeah.
So that is the only increase, but it's a 20 cent per thousand gallons on there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we show that as a breakout on the utility bill?
We do.
Okay. I don't, look at my utility bills real close, I just pay them.
The other, the other thing that I think is true is that we continue to subsidize the irrigation costs.
Yeah, it's not part of this, but yes.
No, okay. Well, I was looking at setting the irrigation rates, and I know we're doing that for the...
Yeah, this irrigation is strictly only for Coral Canyon Golf Course. That's the only irrigation.
Is it more than what we're doing for the rest of the city?
Yes.
Yes, and that's because...
We have to pay that much for the water. That's our cost for that water.
Then we have to pump it into there, right?
We have to pump it, we have to buy the water, we have to pump it, and we have to maintain the system.
So it costs us more.
It costs us that much. That, and in your packet, there was a letter, Suburban Engineering prepared, that actually was the analysis for that rate.
I recall, right, Council, this water's what dumps into Razor Ridge, our pond down there, and then comes down into their lower pond, which they irrigate.
Which also, that water feeds our water treatment plant, which we treat the, the culinary.
Any questions for Mike?
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the resolution amending the master fee schedule culinary water rates. Is this the right one? This is the next one. I make the motion to approve the resolution for replacing the resolution of R 2017-19 by amending the culinary and water rates from 46 cents to 66 cents per thousand gallons.
I'm missing anything in there? I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second.
Turick eye.
Bellis night.
Ranger eye, I have... Ranger eye.
Clough eye.
Just, you were saying that there was a letter in here from Sunrise?
Yeah, in your packet, there was...
I forgot the Lester Dalton letter.
Yes, that's the one.
That's from Sunrise.
Oh, is it? Okay. Yeah, ward, ward eye. Not that I was gonna change that based on that letter.
So if we did a study out there and then didn't replace the rate, are we, are we doing some catch-up here?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
And also within this, is there, within the horizon coming before us, and anticipated more changes in our rates per thousand gallons the next five years?
Well, the Water Conservancy District's... Every year, it's a 10 cents per thousand. And as far as on, on the city side, no, we have just finished last, 2017, we finished our, our master plan. We don't normally do an update on our rates, but every five years.
Well, I knew, is I probably, within the last year or two, reduced?
We have been reduced.
Reduced, yeah.
We've reduced the impact these, and...
But you, have you, when was the last time you get, you drilled a new well? Because aren't you working on some new wells?
2001. But the issue with that is there's not really any water up there to drill for.
I bet there is this year.
Well, and I don't even know that there is this year, because when, if we drill a new well now, we would impact another well. We are looking at, so in, we have the rig line, those are really small producing wells. That was the last well we drilled, I believe it was 2000, 2000, we drilled that well. Did all of the groundwork, paid a lot of money to have research done, guaranteed we'd get a minimum of 600 gallons a minute. We got 125. So now what we're looking at, we put all the infrastructure in for that kind of water. So we've got the pipeline, we've got the tower, all up there. So what we're looking at now, and possibly next year's budget, we'll look at going in and drilling wells down along that road where we've got the water on the power line, knowing that we're only gonna go after 150 gallons a minute, which is very easy to get. It'd be very cost-effective if we, if we do that, and we could get up to our 600 or 800 gallons a minute out of that well up there. We just gotta put smaller wells in, which are much cheaper, drill smaller holes, a lot less on the equipment side. But the infrastructure's there at hand, which was a big cost. We're looking into that with water getting scarcer, with our rates climbing, climbing, with district charges, we're looking at anything we can do to produce water on our own, on our own. And if you remember, last year, we did a major upgrade on our treatment plant, we got our treatment plant producing almost 1,000 gallons a minute more by more efficiently using the plant and filter replacements, so.
Continue to appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike, very much. Item G, consideration to approve a resolution amending the master fee schedule for culinary, raw water whites, and community center fees.
I move approval? Or not? That's okay. If you want to approve, we're good. So the, the master fee schedule right now is just gonna be reflective, the changes you just made, and then the community center has a couple fees that they need to have raised as of July 1st, and they're here to talk about them.
We just would have gone through, and I didn't have to get up here, but appreciate being here tonight. We had a couple of items, and I'm gonna probably have Cole come up, and when we get to the sports section ones, but we're going to a new software system starting effective on July 1st, and due to that, we needed to do a couple of adjustments related to that to work with the new software better. So I'll just start with the swim lessons. The new software goes, works better on a per-session basis rather than a lump sum for the whole. So what you'll see there on the swim lessons is instead of saying that eight classes is 32... So what you'll see there on the swim lessons is instead of saying that eight classes is thirty-two dollars, we're switching it to four dollars per class, which if you do the math, that's the same price as before for residents. But it does give the flexibility for classes that may be four, five, six, seven, eight sessions as opposed to just, just one flat rate there. There will be a slight adjustment on the non-resident side because of that. Where before we had a flat five dollar difference, now it'll be four seventy-five per class, which means if you have a few less than eight classes, it's a little bit less money. If you have the eight classes, it raises that price from thirty-seven to thirty-eight dollars for that particular session.
What would be the issue if we stayed at that five dollar rate?
Help me to understand what your question is.
Well, it's been five dollars.
Okay, so the reason.
Why would we stay at five dollars?
The new, the new software does not handle it in that way where.
Well, it goes per session for rate. I mean, this was doing one flat rate, right?
Yeah, but that's because the way that our software worked, we just did whatever the rate was and added the five dollars. The new software we have does not, it wants to do it on a, on an even basis and five dollars does not evenly distribute among those number of classes.
Third lesson, we're talking forty dollars instead of thirty-seven dollars.
Oh, I, I, I gotcha. I got what you're saying now.
There you go, my friend.
You're right there. There is no, I would say that if we did that, we would still be in line with what would be competitive in the industry. So I would not be opposed to that if that's the direction you chose to go.
Stop you from having to have a lot of quarters to make change with.
It would except for when you, when you still go the eight sessions, it comes out to an even dollar amount. So for the most part. But I, I, I would not be opposed to the five dollars. I think it makes it cleaner. So I, any other swim lesson related questions?
If, if it was kept at the rates as it is now, does it put the, the swimming lessons at a disadvantage by not having the additional money? Or is it fine functioning in the lower price and the five dollars?
I feel like kind of what we've proposed keeps it competitive within the area and keeps it matched with what our other sports programs would be. It probably is a better match if we did the four and five as suggested by Councilman Turick to match what a lot of our other programs as well as other cities have done. It still keeps us on the, on, on a fairly inexpensive side when you compare.
I don't know. I just feel in, in conversation with Councilman Turick, I appreciate this being discussed. I feel one of the main purposes of the community center is to try to make it as affordable as possible. And if it doesn't put our, our programs in, in hazard and let it be a lower rate, I would opt for that. However, if there is a perceived need to keep it at four and five dollars, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I guess my only thought process behind it is the fact that our residence is staying the same. And they're the ones that are ultimately funding, I mean, the general fund portion of that comes from our residents. So they stay, they hope true. It's the non-residents. Same theory is if I wanna hunt deer in Colorado, it costs a whole lot more than five hundred. Anyway, just, just, to me, the five dollars is even.
You don't wanna.
I don't think it puts us at harm or, or risk that people are gonna say, oh, we're not going over there because it's too expensive. I think the program warrants it.
You don't wanna make it like five ninety-seven, turn every class, turn every swimming class. You just turn every swimming class into an active math lesson. So it's for the kids.
Okay, I have no further questions on that part.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions for Bam?
I think he's got a couple more sections.
The section, the next section was on the daycare pricing and we did a, we kinda went out and, and looked at what other facilities pricing is. We have not adjusted this for quite a number of years. In looking at where others are at, we found that we were quite low in what we were charging at our daycare level. In fact, the twenty facilities that we looked at, even bringing up to three dollars on a daily pass, so that's a dollar fifty an hour, is, still would keep us at the lowest end of daycare prices of the twenty facilities we looked at, which tend to range anywhere up to about five dollars an hour.
I wanna just wade in on this because.
How did I know?
I've always had a daycare. I, I absolutely, especially if, even, even if you say we'll kind of make sure that, that these take care of our needs in daycare. Daycare is such a regulated thing and it is so important for us to make sure. I, I don't want us to be cheap in daycare. It's just too much of a risk. And so I'm fine, especially if we can say, hey, we're gonna make sure that we're covered and we'll use this increase to make sure that we've got the adequate and maybe even adequate plus coverage. It just is so concerning to me sometimes and I, I, I would certainly support this, especially if you can say, we'll make sure that, you know, these additional funds, always make sure that we've got the coverage that we need, both in requirements to the state and just safety issues. I just worry about that.
There is, and I'm glad you brought that up. That really hits on the two points that really this addresses. Is one is to try and help us address staffing needs in that area. And also we have been hit with additional state regulations this year, which has increased our cost of that area. We have to do additional background screening and other things that have increased the cost of daycare.
What is, what is the cost of that additional background screening look like?
Well, this last year, we spent about seven hundred dollars additionally just to get employees fingerprinted, submitted to the state and have it registered. Even though we do our own background check and fingerprinting of all employees upon hire, the state has instituted a new policy which requires those fingerprints be submitted specifically to the state and they have their own process. So that's kinda, the more employees that you bring on or the more turnover that you have.
Yeah.
You know, the more expenses.
You're not, just to be clear, you're not doing your own background checks. You're just doing that as a part of the hiring process.
Well, we, we ended up having to actually double do it with these employees because we do it as part of our city hiring and then we have to send them out for fingerprinting and then send them off to the state.
If we have to send to the state, then we need to do the city.
I do not know. It, it's, we don't do fingerprinting as a city on hire and that's the expense part.
Sounds like there's.
Yeah, it certainly would prolong the ability of hire because the time you go through that process, send them up and wait for them to return back.
It takes us now about a month. It takes about a month for us to hire a daycare worker.
I have to say, just watching that daycare, I go up there often and yes, my children participate in this program. I cannot say enough how awesome and smooth it has ran. The checking in, the checking out, the safety of the kids, the staff are amazing. And so I don't know if this is something I should've declared at the beginning, but I just, I just can't say enough for how clean and well it's operated. I think it, first thing at the scenes in the past, we, whenever we have a camp, all of a sudden all the mothers come up there. And I, I was just absolutely impressed with how they handled waiting lists and how they handled people in capacity and were keeping very mindful of what they could do. And I didn't see safety ever compromised and that from an outside source. So for me, as both a council member and as a parent, I'm just impressed with how you've adapted with these changes and modifications as they continue to flex with this clientele that you're dealing with at, at the rec center.
It looks like as part of that, they also get an extra thirty minutes.
Yes, they do.
So really it doesn't, it's straight increase because you've got longer periods of time. So up to two hours there.
And are you gonna cover the employee daycare section there? Is that next?
So one of that, part of this is one of our challenges in the daycare is being full all the time and attracting employees. And so part of this is we wanted to give somewhat of a benefit to those coming in as it is a difficult process to get hired. And a lot of times we're ending up reaching max capacity, not because of room capacity, but because of employee capacity to keep safe levels. And so we, part of what has been brought to us is of the twenty facilities we looked at, almost three quarters of them offered it free to their employees. And while we didn't agree of going all the way to free completely, we did feel like it was justified that we had some mechanism in place to help it be more reasonable for those employees and to maybe help us attract more.
Is that employees across the city or just at the community center?
Just at the daycare.
It's been the daycare employees.
But not even.
Just the daycare employees.
Community center, just the daycare. And that, and so that would be a totally different schedule for them. They're, they're not like in there for twenty, a hundred and twenty minutes and then.
No, not necessarily.
They're just there for the day.
Part of the issue is we don't want our own employees just monopolizing the space and time. We wanna have that available to the public. So that's a part of the reason we didn't feel like completely free was a, was a reasonable thing, that there should be some limitations on that.
Any idea if the space is taken up by employees now compared to what's available to the public?
It's probably taking up about, depending on the day, maybe fifteen to twenty percent of the space.
So, so explain to me the children under two years, one punch.
So we require that employees get the punch pass. We require that that's part of the process of that. It helps us to keep track of it a lot better with what, we, that's what we would like to, to do with this new program. There are different ratios that we must maintain based on the age of the child. Children under two have to have much higher supervision, so essentially they cost more to have them in there. And so we felt like we needed to have employees pay if they had children under two simply because of that increased cost. We can't have more than four kids per employee if they're under the age of two. Or it's twelve per employee if they're over the age of two.
So if it's over the age of two, you have that down as free to them.
So if they have, so if they have any child under the age of two, they would have to pay for that child. If they have up to two children over the age of two, we would allow those first two free. But if they had a third or a fourth child and beyond, we would, we would have them pay for that as well.
So as a clarification, this is for all Washington City Rec Center employees or for just those who are daycare?
It's been daycare that we're really focusing on to increase staffing.
Thank you.
And, and that's not in the, that's not in the, the ordinance thing we're passing here. If you change that, you would just do that as a matter of policy at the staff level group?
I think I'm done. I think I'm gonna turn it over to Cole. He's excited to come up here and do the sports stuff.
My objective is pretty simple, just to propose modifications or increases to existing rates regarding our youth sports leagues, our adult sport leagues, and also field rentals for our baseball softball complex and our Sullivan soccer complex. The numbers are in front of you. The proposed rate increase for resident rate for participation in youth leagues, went increased from thirty to thirty-five dollars per league. For non-resident, from thirty-five to forty-two, so there is a higher increase for non-resident. And I might make mention that our neighboring communities do not have resident, non-resident rates. That is something that was determined at the time of the opening of the community center, that we would try and keep our rates lower for our residents as opposed to those from outside the city. Our sports camps have been at standard twenty-five dollars. We have three-day and four-day camps. We're proposing an increase for three-day camps from twenty-five to twenty-seven and for four-day camps from twenty-five to thirty-six. That covers proposed increases, proposed increases for our youth programs. Any questions, concerns, comments?
No, just an appreciation. I've really watched these programs and how they draw in hundreds of people. And it's been a good thing for the community. I do appreciate it. So thank you for monitoring these.
Certainly our goal has been to keep affordable. It's been a number of years since we've addressed these. I felt like this was the time to do it. It will bring us again more in line with, with our neighboring communities as well. Not that we have to compare with them, but it does bring us more in line with St. George City, American City.
Well, I, could I mention Cole too that, you know, and, and whether this is unique or not, I don't know. But all of these prices, everybody plays in Washington City. And even when there are circumstances in which people can't afford thirty-five dollars, there are, we've never turned a child away from a sports event in Washington City and it doesn't happen tons. But these help kind of cover that. We don't believe anybody should be excluded because of economics to play in Washington City. And so I appreciate that. He's got a great attitude on him.
Absolutely. Appreciate you bringing that up, Roger. As far as our adult leagues, a couple of proposed modifications. We started several years ago an ultimate frisbee league, which is very, very popular. It's the only adult league that we take individual registration. And it seems like that's quite affordable at thirty dollars per person, which it is. But the reason it's much lower is because we, we don't have to have officials. They basically regulate and officiate their own games. And so we, we can keep our costs a little bit lower because our labor costs are lower, so. And the increase with the softball is simply because the trend has been to move to double header format softball games. Instead of coming and just playing one softball game a night, they now play two softball games per night. Not quite as many weeks, but to cover our costs, our labor costs, we need to increase the fee from three hundred to three seventy-five. We're still basically.
A different fee if they just play one game as opposed to if they play two, because what you've got is just one fee. And I assume that applies whether they're playing one or two games.
Three hundred was the original fee for one game.
Game, so you need to show the three seventy-five as if it's a double header.
But they don't increase, they don't play as many weeks. So it will increase, even though they're playing two per night, they wouldn't play as many weeks consecutively as they would if they were just playing one. Let's say they're playing for ten weeks of play, thirty dollars per night would be to three hundred dollars. So we cut it back to what? Seven, seven weeks of play in a double, or even less than that in a double header format. They, they prefer to have a shortened season, but more games per night. And as we've done the math to cover our labor costs, we feel like three seventy-five is, is a fair assessment of that.
I'm not aware of any league now, councilwoman, that even says you can play one game. They, they, it's two games of that. Yeah.
Softball is a dying breed right now. We, there's not a lot of interest, even in St. George with the canyon's complex. There's just not a lot of interest with softball.
It used to be. Senior games are still okay.
Yeah.
I stopped playing, so it must be dying. Now it's golf.
Maybe the most significant increases proposed tonight are those associated with field rentals. With the baseball softball complex, we're proposing a hundred dollar per field, per day increase from two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars during peak seasons. And during holiday weekends, we're being overwhelmed with requests for use of our fields. The rate increase that we're proposing at Sullivan is from five hundred dollars per field per day to one thousand dollars per field per day on holidays and peak seasons. And those peak seasons are basically February first to the end of April and then September first to the end of November.
So with this doubling of the fee with the Sullivan fields, was the intent, is this comparable to other places or simply to meet the needs we have within our, our complex and about itself?
Washington City is the desired location for tournaments. Not just tournaments, but leagues, practices, tryouts. We're being overwhelmed because we are the only city that doesn't depend on the county for facilities. Several years ago, Washington County School District said, we can't handle it anymore. We, private sports are growing at such a rapid pace that we can no longer have them in our gyms, on our fields, on our courts. It's demanding on our custodial staff, on our administration, on our athletic department. So they implemented fees that basically priced the private sector out of use of the schools. And Craig Hammer called us together and said, cities, you handle this. Well, we've done the best that we can in Washington City. We've got the soccer complex. We've got the beautiful community center. And so people are rushing to Washington City, and we are being overwhelmed with requests. The demand is much greater than the supply.
Is this gonna shut it down completely?
Well, a little bit of where this, and I don't want to say too much, but finally, for the first time since I've been with the city, almost twelve years, we met with all of the cities in Washington County minus enterprise recreation leaders. We also invited Kevin Lewis and Doug Boyer from the county because we had a perfect storm this last fall, or this last spring, pun intended. The weather posed a real problem for these tournaments because these tournament directors are scheduling, they're collecting hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then they're running into snow and, and rain and inclement weather. And they, they get angry with us, and they think that we can control Mother Nature. We could, you know.
We can control the weather like we control the mainstream.
Anyway, bottom line is this.
Well, I'm just trying, trying to understand, what would that conversation even sound like? To get mad at you about the weather?
You would be surprised. Some, some tournament directors get real belligerent with us as staff, and even some of my park staff out outside, and I the wear and tear on our field.
So you're telling them they can't get on it if it's wet because.
Yeah, we have an inclement weather policy and we want them, but it's for the safety of the kids first, even before turf preservation. But Kevin Lewis with, with Washington County was very specific and said, we don't need all these tournaments to, to bring people to Washington County during peak seasons. What I recommend is that you increase your rates and try and sway these tournaments to come during non-peak season because there's already plenty of people swarming to Southern Utah during the spring and during the fall. But I have to look at the additional hours that our park staff and our recreation staff are investing to try and support all of these private organizations. We just can't keep up with the demand, and it's not just tournaments. It's leagues, it's practices, and the private sector can be pretty disrespectful if we are not at their beck and call.
Yeah, can I add to that right there?
Sure.
I mean, this is the issue right here. So we are dealing with, for the most part, almost club teams.
Absolutely.
So we're dealing with club teams that have, that charge excessive amounts or substantial amounts of money to participate in these things, and they come down here during our peak season to the point, and not just come down, some of them come down, some are around here.
Yeah, some local.
Some are local, and they're to the point where they want not only just these practices, and they're actually kind of pushing us out a little bit too. And not only that, but I've, I've had the, you know, misfortune of having to sit through a couple of these meetings with some of these leagues. And they're just rabid with each other too.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, I mean, so my, my response to that is I don't think you're gonna see the demand fall off at all.
Yeah.
But again, this to me is one of those things that I don't, I don't feel it's comfortable subsidizing kind of an almost at-profit team.
Right.
And we ought to not only cover our costs, but I don't even care if there's a margin to help subsidize those things that, that we have to subsidize anyway. And I'm, I'm, I don't think you're doing that even. But I don't have a problem with even that. So it is a problem.
Well, it's a huge problem, and, and that's why we're trying to come as a county and address this, to determine a solu-, you know, a solution. Our county commissioners are not really willing, they may be willing to partner with cities and assist with some buildings, some building of some venues and facilities, but they don't want to build them themselves. They don't want to maintain them. None of the other cities right now really have plans to, to build large venues that's gonna take any of the pressure off Washington City. I hate to say it, but I, between Corinne and I, we, we devote sometimes fifty-plus percent of our day trying to accommodate the private sector. I was hired as a recreation manager to provide services to all of our kids, regardless of age, regardless of ability, regardless of income. And I feel like sometimes I get pulled in that direction. I feel the pressure from the private sector, and a lot of the private sector is what brings the revenue with. But I want to go back to what Barry taught me from years ago, and that is we need to maintain the integrity of our recreation leagues and not get pulled into the private sector to where we're neglecting our kids. And it's, you know, it's, it's a challenge, and I, you know, I guess I'm pleading for a little bit of support. Maybe if we raise these fees a little bit, it will discourage some of them from coming during those peak seasons or coming at all.
So I don't have concern with raising rates on, you know, the outside tournaments and whatnot. You know, the only concern I have is, you know, local, local groups and, and I guess what constitutes a, a tournament, if they're gonna come in and, and have like local team play. I wouldn't even, I would, I would, if, if the council wants to go that way, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't divide it that way. I would divide it based upon a community type of a, a program versus a private.
Tournament.
Because we have the private tournaments here too that are still charging fortune to the kids to participate, and they're still bumping us off the fields.
So a tournament's a tournament is a tournament.
So talk to me about bumping us off the fields. They, they don't take a scheduling priority, do they?
No.
So what does that mean when they're bumping us off the fields?
Well, the practices, we've had these problems before.
It, it hasn't allowed us to grow our programs at the rate that I would like to because we're.
You'd like to expand the, your local programs, but there's, you don't have the field time because you're, because they're calling in and getting on the schedule ahead of it and just.
Because we're trying to accommodate so many of the private sector.
Well, so, so why, I mean, and I'm, I'm not arguing any other point. I'm trying to understand. So, so why not just block out the time on the fields that you want for the groups that you want, and you still make a plea for charging. I'm just, just, why not just block it out if you're controlling?
We actually do.
Okay.
But my concern again is we would like to expand services for everyone.
Okay.
And once we block out what we are currently doing, along with the demand from the private sector, I don't really have gym space or field space to. But we, yes, we can do that, but what's going to happen, I'm afraid, if I start saying, well, and some of you already know this, if I start saying, no, fields aren't available or gym space is not available, you're the ones that are gonna start hearing about it. They're gonna say. That SOB Colstal you up there.
Well, there are a couple of ways to, because all of these short-term rentals coming up and SOBs coming in, and they're trying to accommodate all these people that are coming in.
You know, some of that's okay though.
We're gonna hear about it.
Well, some of that's okay. I mean, once you, once the pricing goes up, that should incentivize the private market to actually go build some fields. If there, if there's a value that's really there, and they, that's really something in the market that people want, they should, they should be able to find people who go fill that, that value for them. So I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the goal of doing it here, if you're, if you're trying to help subsidize some of those programs by raising the rate. I guess I'm fine with that too. I just.
I, I think what you said is a key thing because really, that's what's happening. That's what's driving it, and it's a paid, it's a paid play. And so they are charging these morbid fees to do that, and they're bringing all these people in, and it's, and a lot of the kids can't do it. There's, there's kids that, there's kids that can, you know, but these, these troutling teams, these, through baseball, through soccer, all those different, it's just not.
Barry, isn't, isn't the expansion, the expansion of Sullivan's in the master plan for the parks?
We have, we have that on, we do have that on, on the master plan.
Right.
Yeah.
But, and there's been some discussion about expanding it.
So in that, in that master plan, we discussed this when we had our, when we had our discussion forward to master plan. We have a Sullivan slash base, so we talked about the, the other private companies coming in, which I think is.
Right.
That's kind of where we're going to.
But here's where I'm going with this. So counties have the issue, you know, Kevin Lewis is involved with it and, and whatever else.
We came up with them.
What not to do with, with dealing with these people coming in. I, I agree. If we can get them to go to the off-season times, that's, that's great, all well and good, but the county has that TRT. They're sitting on twenty million bucks or something like that. If we've got it in a plan that we can expand some of the facilities in Washington City, why don't we go apply to the county?
We have, we have. These are discussions we're having right now with the people we're meeting with, and the county is with that. So we are, we are doing that. We're on that route.
Well, they, they have a, they have a tendency to hoard funds over there, and it's not, I don't think it's legal or ethical for them to do it.
So all you, all you council members, that, that, that's really what we're trying to do. That's part of it. And, and the county's saying this, this is one way you, you, we can help and you can do that. But it, it kind of drives the private to take care of their own private too.
To my knowledge, they haven't done anything with TRT or RAP within Washington City. They've done plenty within St. George City, and it's high time they, they, they contribute to some of those funds.
That's one of the things that driven what we're doing, and we, we have had enough of that. Just so you, we, we want to thank you for your support with all that we've done because we are the city of choice. I mean, this is where they come, and the county's told us that, and the other cities say, they, they've told us, as we sat in these meetings, we said, we're just, they, they said, matter of fact, it was a Jeff's sister from Hurricane, that she said, you're, that's why, that's why, because your facilities are the best, you have them, we, no one else does, and that's where everyone's coming. And so we, it's gotta be, we gotta take care of it.
Yeah. Well, and that's who, and I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from, which is, I, I, and I don't, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but, but sometimes we get into this situation where they, they're irritating and they're kind of a frustrating customer, if you will, and so we, we, we almost want to react based on that, but if there is, I would almost rather us saying, well, look, if you're a tournament, you know, there's, if you're a for-profit tournament, there's, let's put a fee schedule here. If it's taking a ton of your time to schedule and deal with that, then let's raise some registration fees or raise, if they want, if they're changing the times or they want to do that, let's add some, let's add some costs where it's actually doing it with it, so, so that we get away from where we don't kind of, we dislike our customers because of what they are. Now, if there's, if there's a, if, if, if they're on the field at a time, we want our, our, our own individ-, our own kids to be there and our own programs to be there, I, I'm fine with blocking that out, but I'm, I'm, I guess I'm kind of like Roger. If, if there's an opportunity and it fits with the program we want to do, I don't have a problem making a little extra money from some of these organizations that helps us to like them as a customer and helps support and maintain the fields in other ways.
Let me just add one comment to that. I, I wouldn't define it as, as dislike. I, I don't know if that's necessarily fair. What it is, is, I mean, honestly, we get this question all the time. Why doesn't government be more like private, or, yeah, the private market? Well, what we're trying to do is reflect the private market that is trying to take advantage of a public service.
Yes.
And so it's not that we dislike them, it's just a different service.
And I, so I, I apologize for phrasing it that way, but in some cases, in some cases, we kind of get stuck in that because, you know, some of these folks, they have, they have people they're charging a lot of money to, and they feel a lot of pressure, and, and they feel no qualms about pushing that right back on you because you're a pub-, you're a private, or you're a public sector individual. I just, I would almost, in that case, I'd almost, like you said, take the, the, the public's, oh my gosh, I'm getting my public and private mixed up here, but, but treat it like a business almost and just say, well, we can raise the rate on this and, and, and have, help out our community with that cost and adjust it to where we can maintain.
Just, just a comment of what you're talking about. We don't, we don't set those rates. Those are not, not our rates. Those are the rates that they're charging the private.
No, I understand.
And so that, and so we, that's kind of what we're doing. We're setting the rate on the fields to, to do that because we don't set those rates what they charge.
Right.
This is not our thing. It's a private thing, and so, but you're exactly right, and that's, that's where it's got to come from. So we are basically doing that, setting the rate on the fields.
My bigger concern, obviously, I want to make sure the locals are taken care of and, and whatnot, but if, if, if we can get the, the county to help us, you know, attack the problem, so to speak, and, and get them to come in and expand our services in, in Washington City, let's, you know, let's do it.
I wanted to address that. Apologize if we got sidetracked. Do you have, just like with everything else, we do have that, not our, our locals.
Even for tour-, tournaments?
Yes. No, not for tournaments, but for practices and for deep play. So what happens is, let's say we have a mage or heat or SEMA or whoever.
Right.
And they can provide a roster to us, showing they have fifty percent of their Washington kids.
But, but not on, not on tournaments?
Yeah, they're making money at that point.
Are there, are there any, like, Washington County tournament?
No.
Even the Washington County tournament, they come from all, in other words, they come from all over. There's Washington County kids in it, but they, they bring them all over. It's, it's.
Well, and we know, I mean, the reason they come down here is because the weather's awful up there.
Yeah.
You know, so that's when they're gonna come. They think you're gonna push them into summer. You're not gonna push them into summer. They're gonna come when it's cold.
And this is the conversation the county has. The county says, you know what, we are overwhelmed too. I mean, they're the ones that are inviting them and pushing all, you know, the advertisement, come down here. But they, they've said to us, you know what, we're, we don't, you know, we're, and those times of the year, we're, we're overwhelmed, we're booked, everything's booked out, and we want to push them to other, other times, which.
But I don't think you're getting, so I guess that's my question is, what is the goal of raising the rate? Are you hoping to, what? Okay. And I'm kind of with Roger. I don't think it will. Because they have a limited amount of time, and that sunshine, you can't get it anyplace else. You go to Mesquite, you're right, their fields are not as nice. So sorry, but your, your second point is. Okay. To put your people out there.
And keeping our fields. And keeping our fields the way they are. I mean, our fields are maintained the way they are, and, and, and they look like they do because it costs money. It costs a lot of money to, to do what we're doing.
What's, what's the policy on the score? Car, or the, you know, the scoreboard? Scoreboard, yeah, thank you. Because I saw a bunch out there the other day that, you know, the scoreboards weren't being used, and it just kind of seems. Sure.
But we tell the tournament director they're available to use. If you want to use them, and you have volunteers, it's gonna come to them.
So they, they just take the.
It's their.
The, the hook up.
Okay.
They can, they can do it their way.
One thing that was said kind of in a hush and a quick was, I'm just impressed that by addressing this need, you were being very open, discussing it with all the adjoining communities. I don't think we've ever had all the communities at a rec center level or recreational level come together and, and talk about how we interact as a community, and I thought, that's some amazing leadership that you've let out on in Washington City.
And we hope you'll support us down the road with that because we are really drawing a hard line with, with everybody, with the county. I mean, we've really come out and said, we, we just can't do this anymore. We need help, and we're, and so that, we're gonna keep driving that and go in that direction.
Well, you know, it's a, it's an interesting dilemma because back when the baseball fields were built on BLM land that St. George has got, and, and all the pickleball fields that have gone in, and senior world games where we bring people from all over. Now, the basis of the county for a long time has been, let's get people in here because we make money off of them, okay? So now we're saying, yeah, we're being overwhelmed everywhere, whether it's Zion or on the soccer field at Sullivan, it doesn't really much matter. We're being overwhelmed, and we're saying, maybe too much of a good thing is not a good thing. But now how do we manage what we've created? People now know about this area and they want to come, and now look what we've done.
And we, and we don't, it's, we don't not want them. We do want them. We do want them to come. We just want them to, to pair their, their fair share of what they're doing. We do want them to come. We don't want to drive people away or not having them come. This is a great place to come. We want to welcome them, but they just. this is a great place to come, we want to welcome them, but they just need to pay what it costs to be there.
Yeah, it's a true.
I like the, I like the comment, too, because it's somewhat reflective of our community center, too. We knew when we first built our community center that we were relying upon non-Washington City residents for some time, but what you're starting to see, because of our growth, because of the interest of the, in the community center, you're seeing now that number of residential patronage going up and up and up, and we're not even, and we're even struggling with, you know, how many outside teams do we let come in, because we can't accommodate our inside teams. But, I mean, we talk about an overall community center coverage ratio of somewhere around 60-plus percent, but when you look at really youth sports, and what we do offer, all about youth sports covers very, what we charge our youth is very, very, much smaller than that, and we subsidize the difference, and so again, who's subsidizing the difference? Is the Washington City taxpayers.
And come up to the community center and see what it's, what it's like. It is, that place is full.
I remember when you had the.
It's a great thing, it's a great, it's such a great thing for this community, the quality of life and the things that go on there, and it is used in impact.
These are good dilemmas, and irresistible.
Well, I know at the community center, I appreciate how wet you keep the water and the pool.
I would like to say, as a person who's been a consistent patron there for the past almost 10 years, I used to think when we first started, man, they're never going to fill this parking lot, they'd never do anything here for that, and I would say in the past three years, to find a parking space in that place, it blows my mind, the usage that that community center takes, it's amazing, so.
And it's because of the great staff, and these guys and girls, and people that do it, they just do a great job, and we're supporting you, we thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. What an interesting conversation. What a great dilemma we have. I remember when all the hotels in the winter, or in the summer, no vacancy, no vac, I remember that, now it's, we're building hotels right and left, like we're building restaurants, so it's pretty amazing. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we improve our resolution admitting the master fee schedule for culinary and raw water rates, and community center fees with the adjustment being on the swim lessons for non-residents to the $5 per lesson rate, and the others as for the master fee schedule.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second.
Ward, I.
Cluff, I.
Granger, I.
Bellis and I, I got a quick question, on, you know, back to the, let's go pursue the county for a little bit, if we can get kind of a timeframe on that, because I think they're under a little bit of heat to actually spend some of those funds from the state of Utah, at least from what I understand.
I think the good thing is, I think we've got a good guy in Kevin, and that's really the direction, because if Kevin could push that back onto the commission, that's going to be better than the best, the best solution.
Appreciate it. Bellis and I, thanks.
Tariq, I, and I'll say, take Belliston with you to the commission, he's their favorite. They love Belliston over there, so just take him with you.
Pretty popular right now with them.
No comment.
I'm going to stop.
Thank you. All right. Item 10, report from the signed committees, anything to report?
Just with that active transportation committee and the striping of Northridge, I've raised the issue, because of the now, some of the lanes, and I think we're going to try to get more information to kind of bring that forth a little bit, and I honestly don't know which is a better solution, if there is a solution, but I appreciate maybe some continued dialogue about that issue. Should it be three lanes and bike lanes, or should it be five lanes down the middle of that community, or is it time to narrow those lanes to match what we're going to do with Washington Parkway? It's a discussion, and I have a resolution in my own mind, just a discussion, and appreciate if we continue that discussion.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll just report a couple of things out of the MPO. Most of us attended last night, the big issue, main biggest issue was obviously transit, a lot of discussion there. The other thing is, there are a couple of studies that are being initiated with the MPO on UDOT on new freeway interchanges, one of those being at Exit 7, which is St. George City 700 South. They're looking at a, beginning an impact study to look at feasibility of a freeway interchange there, and also one on Exit 18, which is the north end of the Hurricane Industrial Park. We're trying to get some of those semi-trucks to utilize that north exit, rather than coming down to Exit 16 and block it up, SR9 and some of that traffic, so. Anyway, that's, that's the big.
State manager report, excuse me, anybody else? City manager report?
Thank you, Mayor, let me just pick up on a couple of things that'll be of interest to the council. We're looking in July at bringing the, an update to the irrigation plan back to the council work session, so you get the latest and greatest there. So you had approved, of course, Feller excavating regarding Merrill Road and the construction there, and just a reminder, we're anticipating starting in about 30 days on Merrill Road, and with, of course, a completion of 120 days on that way. Washington Parkway extension, plan reviews will begin kind of formal plan reviews in July, hopefully with a bid in September. The maintenance project that you've been watching around town, the slurring and all that, we'll be completing this week. The Main Street project, the work on Main Street is projected to bid in December. From a park standpoint, we do have property agreement right now.
Sorry, did you say bid in December?
Bid in December. With regards to the parks and the boilers, we have property agreement up to Ball Ventures, that was one we were going to do the land swap with, to line up the intersection there. However, and we don't anticipate, that'll be lengthy, in their hands, they've already have been, had some dialogue back with us, but in the meantime, also, we're refreshing those numbers that we had received a couple of years ago, or whenever we did. With regards to the project, Sunrise Engineering prepared those, we're having them refresh that, and so we're hoping to get that ready to bid. And even if there's a delay, I'm going to tell you this, even if there's a delay with regard for the property swap, I mean, we still have access, so we can begin, it doesn't have to be lenient, okay? We can begin construction and other things to finish that alignment. We don't think that it will delay, but it doesn't need to be first before we start anything else, so, yeah.
Can you, are we going to see the changes that are coming through for that?
Yeah, yeah, what we'll do is, once we get, we can just put that on probably the next work session, and what we'll do is, we'll get, I think it'll be good for the council to take a look at the design again, it's been a while, and Barry can at that time update any changes in numbers, and we can do that for next, we'll be ready by next work session, we'll be.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, that'd be great.
I think it'd be good for everybody to kind of be refreshed and know where we're going with respect to that. I'd sent out to you the survey on the Green Springs, and I only mention this because we'll be, the Parks Group, Barry will be before you, to kind of get your direction on the basin there in the Green Springs area, and I think that whatever direction you give us is great, we'll just have that discussion, I think, relatively quickly, too.
Do we know when we're doing that?
I think we could probably do that now, that you've got the survey back next work session as well, don't you think? Yeah, and then whatever we end up doing, whatever is the direction of the council, there'll still be probably an accompaniment of the RAP, a RAP request associated with whatever direction the council gives us on some level. Also in July, and before you ask, Councilman Ward, it'll be just sometime in July, we'll bring back the capital facilities plan, you guys have been involved in a number of steps with that, we should be able to bring that back, and just get, again, your review on that final review, and hopefully we'll set that up for adoption for whatever option the council wants to do. I don't think there's a whole lot more, other than giving you time to look at at least that issue with regards to impact, the sensitivity analysis. I think we're ready for you guys to look that over, give what recommendations, make a recommendation to move forward on one level on our capital facilities plan. Electrical, the Green Springs feeder line should be completed by next week, that's been some of the work, and I'm worried enough that they've seen up there. The Turf Farm line, that's the rebuild there, should be energized next week, and it takes about four weeks to transfer load from the old lines to the new lines, but that's, that'll begin next week. The Cactus Lane freeway crossing has been completed now, and the nice thing about that, I'll just mention, is, is that feeder line now helps balance a lot of our commercial load a lot better, and so it helps with redundancy on our commercial load for outages and other things, so that was a good improvement as well. And then, I guess, I didn't really plan on talking about this, and then you brought it up, but I think it's fair, Mayor, I guess, and let's talk a little bit about transit for a second, and tell you kind of where, at least, we are, we have had some discussions with St. George City, for those of you who are here, and some of you were, in 2006, we were kind of a fraction of an inch close to having the transit system in the downtown, and then St. George pulled the plug for, well, some reasons, I don't even know, but anyway, various reasons. So we met with Mayor Pike and city manager over in, first of all, to determine their interest in, if they still had interest in Suntran, it was an absolute resounding, yes, absolutely, and they feel that it doesn't need to be a lengthy process either, they're going to brush off the agreement they have with Ivans, they'll look at the agreement that actually this city council passed in 2016, and kind of hopefully move that along fairly quickly, so this council has something back to them that says, here's the agreement we would have with you. I also sent over to them the pricing that was originally proposed to us in 2016, knowing that that will have changed, but wanting to give them some perspective, that was actually developed by Fred Davis, the transit manager over in, and it was really well done, spreadsheet pretty well broke out, so I sent that over to him, as well as, again, the proposed routing, which the council had approved back in 2016 as well, and again, it's mostly the downtown proper, but it does pick up some Buena Vista stuff as well, it goes down to Sullivan Park, and up, and 1100, Winter Haven, King's Row, those areas along there, then along the backside, the community center, wanders through the downtown area, goes up Main Street, picks up some Buena Vista, and then back down with the interchange station being at Desert Industries. So that was, so we sent that over. Now, again, that's not necessarily firm, that was just what, to give us an idea of what they would like and everything, but they've given us the indication that, that they don't feel this is a lengthy process, in order to get documents and that back to the Washington City Council to review and decide where they're going to be. We've also had conversations with the state tax commission, and we have confirmed that even though the state tax commission is clear, and we've actually sent them our resolution, we actually sent that a week and still ago, it does require us to have this more formal agreement with St. George City, but they do have our resolution, and they had that for a while. So the state tax commission is also aware of this, and as a matter of fact, the state tax commission, one of the contacts, the state tax commission is the one that sent some clarifying language over to, was it Kim Haven, I think, with the county? Yeah, some clarifying language over to Kim Haven on what the role the city can have with this, and when, when that time begins. So we're hoping that, because, oh, then, the big part, still, it could be a delay, is of course, if all the rest of this goes well, and if the relationship is solidified, then of course, we still need a vehicle, we know those can be lengthy, but Mayor Pike indicated that sometimes that lengthy period can be reduced, if you can piggyback on somebody else's order, meaning another community's order, and when I say lengthy, I believe that the last time, you're about a year, for, if you're starting from scratch, on a bus.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that, from my understanding, was that you didn't necessarily have to have a plan, routes or anything like that in place.
No, you don't, we have to have a recognized transit system to be recognized, and that can be, that can be in the form of an interlocal, but it has to be that much.
So we just have an interlocal that says we're working on it, as we work together to put the route, because that is the trigger that'll allow us to start building those funds to be. We need to have at least that much.
It's got to be certain requirements, if you do that route, it's going to certain requirements that got people to build.
I don't think the routing, we didn't ask that specific question, I don't think the tax commission really cares about the routing, it'd just be, we've got a recognized transit facility that will be serving this, is noted by.
I just want to start the clock ticking as soon as possible.
Well, and Councilman Tariq and I talked about that last night, we understand, I think we as staff understand the councils, and so, believe me, we're, any time that can be moved, a few days forward, we'll do that for you.
Are they still starting it at like a one bus?
Well, yeah, because what we, well, right now, I mean, again, the council hasn't had the chance necessarily weighed into this, and you can change that, I mean, we've surveyed numerous times, now, again, we haven't done it most recently, but I think that what we've talked about is initially serving the most atneed requests we get, we continue to get, and this is the comment I made to several at the meeting last night, is, you need to put into perspective the fact that we are getting a high amount of requests, and have for a number of years from our own citizens, and it's, I think it's very difficult for us to tell those citizens, well, you know, can you hold on for a few more years? And our highest demand, not only from what we've assessed, but also what we're hearing is downtown, particularly if you want to look at our bus stops that are in this route, which I can send to you, that at least was the original proposal, you can see almost where the at-demand issues are being hit, are coming from. And so, and as this has even hit more of the public agenda, we've actually gotten some response from the community saying, thank you, keep going, when does it start?
Yeah, I've seen some of that, which is almost, just as a sidebar about transportation, it almost shocks me that we're still utilizing buses in, for inquiries like that, it just seems like there should be a better way. I mean, I'm listening to the St. George folks last night, talking about their empty buses running around, and there is, there's such a peak and a valley to some of those, seems like somebody ought to just invent an app that have a mass transit system, you pre-schedule your stuff, it gives you a time when and where to be, I'm sure, like, well, you know, in some ways, yeah, I mean, you know, and.
I think as, as this transit system gets put together, some of those discussions are taking place about how do you, you know, how do you pull up on your phone where the buses are at, what.
Yeah, it's, but it's just, it's just the point that the bus still has to keep running at the same time when you don't need it, and it's just still, it's still, yeah, just to hit the stop, you know, and I, and I get that when there's a demand that necessitates that, like, you know, just this constant stream, I don't know.
That's how the discussion's going for, as they design and build this transit backbone that's, that's coming into play.
Yeah, prime time was every hour and a half, but the non-prime time was much longer, you know, that was part of the dialogue going on. I, you know, I just want to, I'm making an observation now, and Mayor, I appreciate your leadership in the cities, too, but I think we're at the cusp of a new era of cooperation with St. George that is probably unprecedented.
I would not only agree with that, if I can tag on to that, and I want to, I want to say that I think a big reason for that has been Mayor Nielsen.
I just said that.
Yeah, I think he has been the catalyst, even more so than the city, he's led the city with respect to that, and I appreciate you.
I just see it happening, I see partnerships evolving, it's really a pleasing thing.
That's kind of your say, and it's nice to get a free lunch from Mayor Pike.
You know, can I just say, can I say one more?
And I give him the free go, so.
So one more thing with regards to kind of the cooperation on the transit side. You know, a comment was made kind of last night with respect to, you know, this only works when kind of everybody, you know, I guess, I don't know, takes one for the team and does it for the whole group.
Skin in the game.
Yes, and, and the only comment I would make is, is, you know, I think, I think that's, you have to be careful with that comment, what, an effective coalition is one that actually comes together recognizing the needs of the citizens that they serve.
My concern with that.
Dismiss those at the.
I'm really concerned about the equality approach to the need rather than the equity approach, which we should be taking within this, because if we approach this as an equality base, I don't think we'll really get the service that really needs to be there. I am hoping that we can have an equity-based approach to making this.
As opposed to the peer pressure. As opposed to the peer pressure based?
The, the, where's the baseball bat, based? Yeah, that was a good one too.
Thank you. All right, there is a need for us to go to a closed session to discuss pending or potential litigation. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and move into our closed session.
So moved?
Motion in a second.
Oh, it's nine.
Cluff, I.
Ward, I.
Let's take five minute break and then we'll meet.
I'm, I'm impressed that our, uh, youth, youth council members stayed here for the whole.
Congratulations Colin Berg, an introduction for being an Indian politician here.
On a budget night as well.